Item that we're discussing tonight, we'll be discussing in work session. Do I have a motion to go into work session?
Yes.
It's effective.
Can move and second it. Roll call please.
Supervisor Creed.
Yeah.
Supervisor Perkins.
Yes.
Supervisor Biggs.
Yes. Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel.
Aye.
Supervisor Tuck.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Chair Politis.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And our discussion tonight is going to be on a on-campus polling precinct. And I guess I'll turn it over to you to get us started.
I'll get us started. We've had, staff has had several discussions in recent weeks about the possibility of redrawing some of the voting lines within the E3 precinct to allow for an on-campus precinct for Virginia Tech students. This has been discussed as an initiative of the Student Government Association at Tech and also has been discussed with President Steger and Vice President Wilton at Tech. They have indicated their support as well. And Supervisor Gabriel, you may want to add some comment as well because I know you've been actively involved with some of those discussions as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's not too much to add. I mean, I know this has been a concern for the students at Virginia Tech, the on-campus students for a long time. And there was some movement, you know, in the past couple of years to do this. And it's really, I think, I really want to thank the representatives of SGA who I just saw walk in for really moving this forward, setting up meetings with Dr. Steger and helping, you know, kind of release the barriers that were there and getting us to this point where we can start talking about this.
Right. Well, with that, I'm going to recognize Marty McMahon, the county attorney, and also Bob Pierceall, who handles our GIS operations, to talk a little bit about the maps that you have before you tonight and what potential opportunities there are to redraw some of these boundaries.
Thanks, Greg. First, I want to really thank Bob. Bob's done a great job with these maps. And I'll turn it over to him in a minute. But just what our marching orders are charged, what we're charged with to do is to create an on-campus precinct, meaning the only voters within the, we call it the new E3, would be people that live on campus at Virginia Tech. And so in Virginia Tech housing on campus. Now, the only exception, and so that was our goal when we started. And you'll see in the maps, the first map we have is the current precinct. And it's not all, but it shows the current E3. E3 is the one, the new one we created when we redistricted. And E3 currently votes down at the airport. And E3 currently includes most, almost all, but not most, of the on-campus housing. With the exception of, if you go to the next map, you'll see where the changes would be. There's a couple dorms that are currently in F that would have to be moved into E. And is there another one, Bob? One in A? Is that the main one?
Yes.
Is it two dorms there? It's a large complex. It's a lot of voters. Either way, we have to move the dorm section into E3. And then, in order to have E3 only as on-campus residents voting there, we would have to take out voters that currently vote in E3 that do not live on campus. And that's the area shaded, shown as A3. Because what we have, that'd be the only place we could put them into because that's the, one of the precinct areas that they had joined. What the rules dictate is if you're going to have an on-campus precinct, then they all got to be contained within that precinct. And the voting location has to either be within the precinct or within one mile of that precinct, is what the rules say. Now, we have not looked at a voting location. That'll be left up to Tech to determine. And also, Tech will need to consult the registrar's office and work closely with them to make sure whatever location is picked, either within the E3 or within a mile of E3, meets the voting requirements such as parking and access and all those things. We're not, we have not looked at that. And we're going to leave, like I said, leave that to Tech and the registrar's office to determine at a later point. So if we go to the current, this is the map that's proposed. The big changes are the people shown in A3 that don't live on campus will be moved out of E3 and put in A. The other change is the dorm, dorms that are in F will be put in E. And then, there's also a dorm section which is called, I guess called the military barracks where the military, what's it called? The corps cadets reside mostly.
Upper quad. It's the upper quad.
Yeah, it's up on top. That's currently in G. But what we're showing it as is putting it in F. And the problem is with that is it's such a large complex. It's over 900, it's close to 1,000. I think it's 950, 960, living in that area that's shown on our maps, shown on our GIS census maps, is that that will skew E too much if we add them in. So our thinking was, let's move from G into F and then they'll vote over at the Lutheran Memorial Church, which is close to where their on-campus housing is. So that's the one exception of students living on campus that will not be in E3. Couple issues, there's a couple issues that have kind of come up that we need to discuss with you about. One, under the federal laws, as you know, the different board supervisor districts have to be not exactly equal, but they got to be within a certain range of equal when you're talking about population. And the reason that's required is this, the federal law requires that everyone's vote has the same strength. And so, well, you know, one vote, everyone has the same voting power. So if you have one district that has 20,000 people and one has 5,000, the people in 5,000 will have more voting strength than the ones in 20. So that's why, under federal law, that would be struck down. And so, right now, our districts are okay. But by doing this, we're going to create, even though we've made some shifts of moving people out of E3 into A, because of the dorm number is so great, E is going to be too large and F is too small. And so, we got to make another change that we're not showing here yet. And one of the changes that's a possibility for you to think about is the Warm Hearth area shown there. There's roughly about 1,400 to 1,500 that we could move from E1 into F2. Their voting change would be insignificant where they vote, meaning instead of voting at the Lutheran church, they're at the middle school, which is about a quarter mile apart. The problem could be, though, is, you know, when we create our districts, we have this thing called community interest. And the only thing we're worried about is, are those people, you know, are they going to feel like they're being taken out of their community interests with the people around them and put into a district that they don't have that community interest? And so, that's one thing to think about when that comes down the road. We don't need to make that decision tonight. We're just kind of raising that issue. Because we do need to move some people out of E into F to balance the numbers. The other issue that could come up, and this is in the future, assuming we make this E3 precinct, and what we will, we will get rid of the one at the airport. That'll no longer be there. And the polling place will be moved on campus. We might, in the future, have to split that precinct. The problem is, under state law, you can't have more than 5,000 registered voters in any precinct. And if you do get to that 5,000 number of registered voters, you're required under state law to split that precinct and create a new precinct. And when we make this change, we're not quite sure the exact number, but we're going to be in the 4,500, probably range, somewhere around there. So we're under the 5,000. But if for some reason more dorms are built on campus or the numbers go up for some reason, once we get near that 5,000 number, we will have to split that precinct. And what you could do is have a second precinct on campus. So that's a possibility in the future that we got to think about. And that's one of the discussions we'll have to have with Tech, I think, as it's not, won't be required with this change, but it could come in the near future, near a couple of years. I don't know what their dorm construction plans are. Bob, can you think of anything else?
No. I think the main thing is that we wanted to not disturb communities of interest, I think, and like Price's Fork. And, you know, no matter what you do here, it's a difficult situation because you've just got so many students in these dorms that are across here. And so, in the past, we tried to divide those up when we did the redistricting here several years ago. But we think this is certainly a good beginning point and would encourage some discussion on it.
Right. What we need to do is send this to Tech and let them look at it. And then, we would encourage them to have a conversation with the registrar's office when they do pick up potential polling places for, within that E3 outline there in blue. I don't know if there's any questions.
Any questions, anybody?
So, how many voters are we talking about is E, district E could be over, roughly?
We deal with populations.
Sure.
Not registered, yeah. Right. So we have to deal with, we have to use the census information, what's your population. And that area, in this area right here, I think the census block showed about 5,000, 5,500. According to our voter register, roughly 50% of those students could potentially vote if we registered the votes. So overall, as Marty said, it probably represents about 40, 400 when you add in this area as well.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. I didn't express that very well. My question is, if these changes are made, Marty was saying that the population of E will be too great. And so, some voters will have to move.
Right.
Have to move, I'm sorry, some census blocks will have to be moved into F.
Sure.
And I see on the map, if you scroll out, there is a little section that's suggested moved into F2. So.
This area.
Yeah, that area too. So I assume that's not, in fact, catching that many voters. So we're still going to be over in E and need to adjust E in some way? Is that what Marty was saying?
There's approximately 202 people living in this area, based on the census.
Right now, if these changes went into place, we'd have roughly like 15,000, almost 15,500 in E. But then, in F, you'd have 13,200. So there'd be a difference of, I'm not very good at math, but like 2,000 too many. E would have 2,000 more than F.
Yeah.
And so, if we went down to Merrimack, show Merrimack Drive and included the Warm Hearth area.
Basically, took this area.
That would take 1,500 out of E, put them in F. And so, that would get them close enough where we wouldn't have to worry.
Warm Hearth, the trailer parks that are in that area and some subdivisions.
So that's.
And that keeps them, right, and that keeps them generally together as one unit. Obviously, there's an inconvenience factor for Warm Hearth, but again, they vote here. To go up there and go to the middle school, actually, the middle school, we think of better parking. There may be some advantages to actually voting there if you're, you know, if you're trying to find a place to park. The church, I think, has always been problematic with its parking.
Any other?
What if we did something a little more radical? And I'm just throwing out ideas to try to accommodate, and I'd love to see the upper quad. What if you took something like what is currently listed as F2, moved that into E, and then moved E3, made it F, you know, 2, and put it in that way? Do you see what I'm saying? And would be.
You mean, made E3 an F?
Made E3 an F and then F2 an E?
We can look at that, see what that does.
What F2?
Well, it looks like, the large portion of F2, if you switched out F2 with E3 and made E3 F2 and F2 E3, wouldn't that encompass and put, you could work on switching those out? Now, I don't know what the numbers are. Is there anything that would prevent that? And I'm throwing ideas and just if somebody's got a better idea or a reason that that's not a good idea, I'm all ears and I'm not going to take offense to it. Do you see how that would consolidate? And you've already got the upper quad in F1 already. That would give you the lower and upper quads in F1 and then which would be F2 where E3 is at. And then, F2, which is still Price's Fork area, will become E3.
Yeah, but F2 really, it's part of Price's Fork, but F2 is where you have Heathwood and Stribble's Mill and that area. And it's right next to that, where you vote, at Blacksburg Middle School.
Right, but they would still vote in the same place.
I thought you said make F2 E.
Make F2, literally, just change it straight up. Just instead of putting F2 there, put E3 where it says F2. And then, put, where it says E3, put F2.
Wouldn't that encompass the whole campus? It would encompass the whole campus. I think my concern would be that, that is a radical suggestion, and I think that's why I wouldn't want to do this right now. That's something that might be worth looking at during redistricting. In fact, it makes a certain amount of sense to do that, you know, during redistricting. But moving 9,000-plus people out of E and moving them to F and, or just basically switching 9,000 people around.
Right.
You know, I think might be a little bit too radical for what we're trying to do here, which is basically just kind of massage E3 so that, you know, the students who are on campus can have a voting location that's on campus.
If we start going down Merrimack, I just have this fear that we're going to look like we're gerrymandering so badly. There's just going to be this little strip that gets us by so we can get one connected to E3.
Well, I agree with you there. I don't like the idea personally of, I mean, I could be convinced otherwise, but right now, I don't like the idea of including Warm Hearth and moving that to F. So the problem is, as Marty was mentioning, is that you got 90, 9,000 students, right, living on campus. And if you're trying to get them into one location, you just got to move, you just got to move some people around.
Move some other pieces.
When you're saying one location, does that mean they only have one polling place that they get to vote?
Right.
Is it not possible to have two?
That many students or not many people to try to get through?
You could create a second precinct. Yeah, I mean, but then that's more manning and more, you know.
Right. Cost me.
But it's a sad, you have the same amount of people in one place you had the other, right?
But that's two, I mean, I'll let Mr. Ward talk about that, but then that's two more, you're creating a second precinct, which will bring costs and more people to work.
And I understand that. But you're getting what you want to be done with that. And if it takes one more precinct there or one more polling place to get that to happen without jerking everybody around.
No, but that wouldn't change what we're doing because you still got to move them all into one district. You know what I'm saying? They have to all be in E3 or E, you know, whatever you want, whatever number you want to call it. If you want one precinct to be on campus, then they all have to be in one of the board supervisor's districts. In E and F, it's only two real options. I mean, I guess you could do A, but that would be very, that'd be tough too.
But, you know, you say that in one, on this hand, but just a minute ago, you were saying go up to A2 and that would actually somehow and put down into E3. And.
Hmm? Yeah.
What was it? You got the little brownish thing mounted up where it says A2?
Yeah, the upper quad. It was upper quad.
And that's supposed to be a whole lot of folks there, right?
Dorms. It's all dorms, yeah.
So, you know, you either can take care of them or you can't take care of them. It sounds like the way we're going, you can't take care of them. But if you have them all hooked together. I don't know if it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but it seems you're moving 100 different ways in order to try to get one thing accomplished when you could move one.
I don't understand. I don't understand the move one. You mean, just move? Most of the dorms right now are in E3.
Right. If you took A2 and put it in E3 and just had two polling places rather than one, you'd have them all, or you won.
And there are a lot of people in A2.
Well, it's got.
Except for that, oh, that little people. Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of people.
That's what you're switching it for.
Are you suggesting that we create like an E4 so that we split the on-campus?
I'm suggesting you can do away with A2 as it is there.
You mean that.
And find some other.
I think he's confused.
If the reason you're doing it is for the students and A2 has got 9,000 students.
No.
No. This part of A2 here is approximately 600 students, similar population.
Yeah.
Where A2.
And that's not, that's not on campus, correct?
Yeah.
That, yes, that's partially on campus there.
Well, that part right there, right?
You're talking that little tiny part.
But there's a tiny little sliver just to the right of where you are right now that's now.
That we're moving to A2.
That we're moving to A2, right?
Right.
That is off-campus.
Yeah, and that's why it's being moved.
Yes, so that is being moved out of.
Out of E3 to A2.
To A2. Right? Okay, yeah. So, there's another issue that's being corrected, which I'm happy to see too, is that little tiny, that sliver of F1 up there, is that there was a dorm that was bisected and half of it was in G1 and half of it was in F1. And so, by putting the entire upper quad in F1, I think that'll end a lot of confusion there and make it a lot more convenient for the students who vote there to just walk down the hill to Lutheran Memorial Church.
And where the military dorm.
Yeah. It's called upper quad.
Yeah.
What is the position of the polling place in that E3? Where are they going?
Right now, it's at the airport.
And that is.
It is towards the bottom right.
Toward that check.
Oh.
The check is.
If you look at it.
Pretty much in the middle of.
Yeah.
Had, in regards to, where has Tech proposed, or is there a proposal where they're talking about putting the polling place?
They've not.
They've not said. Because I know there was at one point in time, you know, talked about Castle Coliseum being a possibility.
At one time.
You know, you think of Squires would be a possible place towards central of the campus, but I guess until Tech decides where it wants it to be.
Yeah, I think, I think that discussion will take place. If the board's interested in moving forward, then I think Tech will have a conversation with the registrar's office about what makes the most logical sense in terms of a location.
I didn't know if, I have another question, but I thought Mr. Brown had.
No, go ahead.
Well, actually, I was wondering if the board might be interested in hearing what the students had to say. I think this is the first time they've actually seen this map, so maybe they might have some thoughts too. Because, you know, if you're not on campus a lot, you don't get a sense of the geography where these dorms actually are. Because some of the places like on E3 here, I mean, it's just empty space. It's part of the farm area and stuff like that. So there's nobody actually there. But some of the things, like those little squares up there where it says F1 and A2 on the map, those are densely populated.
Yeah.
And that's why you're moving a lot of people just in a small space. But I don't know if the board would be willing to let them come up and just give their thoughts or.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I'm happy to.
Yeah.
If they want to. I don't want to put them on the spot, but.
It's not really gerrymandering.
Yeah.
And before they come up here, am I hearing correctly? For us to get a polling place on campus, we have to make these changes? Or could we still work with Tech to have a polling place, move it from the airport more central to the campus?
Excuse me, the only thing about this movement, when we looked at the airport, I remember several years back, that we, some of the local residents there, and especially seeing it was a sort of, had an inferior feeling about coming into campus, voting, dealing with parking services and, you know, and signs and so forth.
My son is a Tech student and he looks in fear of parking services.
It's also my understanding that Tech is not willing to contemplate a location on campus unless there is a precinct that is solely on campus.
That's why I asked that question, because.
And that's why we didn't just do it, we, that'd be easy.
That's correct, mainly because of parking issues. We can't handle the influx of off, this regular, everyday residents in the town of Blacksburg. Could you guys just introduce yourselves?
Yeah, sorry. My name is Brian Ashley and I'm president of Student Government Association. Thank you for having us today.
Absolutely.
I'm Taylor Fix and I'm serving as Senator for the College of Agribrillage and Life Sciences.
My name is Paul Reiss. I'm in the House of Representatives at Student Government. This is Phil that I, I'm there.
Good. First off, again, thank you for letting us come in. Thank you for helping us move this through. Special Gabriel's been there for a while, helping us push it all through. I can tell, one answer to your question, it's not definite. The Squires has come up as a possible location for on-campus. It's not definite by any means, but that's one that came to our minds where it would most likely be like the preferred choice. Also, I think it hit on, the nail was hit on the head when we mentioned community interest. Not only is our community is on-campus divided up, but some of our dorms are actually divided up where we could be neighbors right down the same hall and I'd have to go all the way to lecture middle school and my neighbor would have to go to the Lutheran church. So this is something that we've always wanted to curtail. Definitely make it easier for everyone, you know, students that don't have cars, that have to worry about a bus schedule and so on. This year, we actually had a bus rolling around all day, which seemed to help, but that's something we don't have in the future and it's obviously secondary choice to what we can get done here. You guys have something?
You know, this is, we're working really hard on this. We know that if we can get something on campus, we can get the students a lot more engaged in the process. I think it's something we'd all like to see, you know, have an interest in, you know, their own community, especially since we all have cars. It's like a mile and a half to the airport. So we're, you know, trying to get shuttle running and different things to get them out there. And we hope we can work this out with you guys.
This is also following examples from George Mason University where Fairfax County, they voted unanimously to have this done. Liberty University, now, actually, I have some statistics coming today. We don't have them finalized yet to find out what kind of difference that actually made. But I did get an email before the meeting saying that they do have those numbers and hopefully we'll have them together for everyone to look at. But we're not against possibly having two precincts on campus. The main thing is, obviously, we'd like, if possible, we'd like to keep everyone in one precinct and possibly one campus, one location on campus. You know, if we have to, there has to be two and some students have to walk to the library, which is obviously much easier than having to try to find and travel up to the airport. And also, with the Squires, that would be fine. But what we see here, we're pretty pleased with. I know there'd have to be some kind of more changes, F2. I actually like the idea of possibly changing, adding a little sliver down near Merrimack in F2 just because it helps out with their parking. Because we know parking's such an issue on our campus, on every campus, obviously. But, yeah, I think it's, is there any specific questions you guys have for us today?
Any questions?
The one, the one thing I wanted your opinion on is about keeping the upper quad separate. Do you think that's going to be an issue? I mean, it always seemed to me, but I mean, I have a faculty perspective, so it's a very different one than a student, is that that is kind of separated from the rest of the dorms anyway. And I think just being able to just walk down the hill would be very easy for them to vote there. But I didn't know if they would feel segregated or something like that.
Ideally, because there is such a strong separation and that's also been viewed negatively by both regular civilian residents and our corps cadets, ideally, it would be cool to have us all in one precinct. I understand with population, that's going to be very difficult to do. And I was picturing it myself, just again, walking down the hill, a nice new crosswalk there, going across Price's Fork that they could utilize to get to the church. I don't see any outrageous reactions to it by any means. It's just about meeting with them. We would meet with them and smooth things over, make it, I mean, and kind of portray to them, okay, you could either try to walk or get a ride out to the airport, or you can walk right down the hill, a lot closer to this Lutheran church.
But what if it's at Squires? Isn't it sort of, they're close to Squires too, right?
Excuse me?
Aren't they close to Squires?
Yeah, they're close.
Yes, right across the street.
I mean, because I used to live in Shanks a long time ago, so I'm familiar a little bit with it. So I don't understand, like, if you're trying to, well, I don't know, maybe I'm misspeaking. If you're trying to keep the students on campus, why would you be sending them to the church? Squires, what's going to be the place?
I think population.
Because of the population. Because of the population numbers.
I know, but it's sort of.
Put them all to, yeah.
You know what I mean, that doesn't make sense, but that's just me, whatever.
But I think that we weren't against the idea of having two precincts, because then if there were that, I guess, opportunity to have one in Squires and then have one maybe at Castle or, you know, elsewhere, you know, we do realize that that is going to increase the amount of people that you have to have there working, but I think that, you know, us being in student government and us having this initiative, I feel like there would be enough students that would be taking interest and wanting to assist with this as well and then volunteering, as some of the other universities that have done this, have shown to have done, I, I feel like that there would be enough interest in that to look at as an option, and also, I feel like with that, you're also kind of accommodating the potentials of the campus growing, if you have new dorms or residences that are built in the future, then you're not going to have to be looking at this again a few years down the road, so that might just be something that you all do consider in, in thinking about that as well, if there are going to be two precincts.
So, would you be talking about an E4, E3 and an E4 on-campus?
No, I think, I don't know if they're what, if this is what they're saying, there were two on-campus precincts, but one was E and one was F.
Oh, okay.
Like F3 and?
Yeah, well, yeah, I could do that.
I mean, that, that would alleviate the number problem.
Mm-hmm, you might be able to fix it that way.
But I don't know.
For a campus, it's overwhelmingly aimed towards this walking, we don't, you know, we're trying to aim towards not having students drive to campus.
Right, exactly.
Using the buses, walking around, our main goal is to make sure our students can easily walk to their polling locations, because there's going to come a time where they, most likely freshmen are not going to be able to have vehicles on-campus, and, you know, that might be a decade away, but it's going to happen. My thing is, I want to make sure our students can easily walk to their voting location, ideally on-campus, but if not, somewhere right around there, library, Lutheran church, obviously, we don't want as many people crossing Price's Fork, at least not people crossing Price's Fork as well.
I agree with that.
Oh, yeah. It's very.
That's, that's very concerned with, with moving over to Lutheran church.
In your discussions with President Steger and with Vice President Wilton, was there any discussion about more than one possible precinct, or was it just establishing a place on-campus?
Our locations, our, sorry, our conversations related to mainly, one, getting everyone on-board, but secondly, the only stipulation we had was, the only way we would be able to have one on-campus is for it to only be on-campus, like students.
In my conversations with Dr. Wilson, he reiterated the same thing to me, that they support it if it's a student-only precinct.
And then when we do it, when it comes to signage, when that, you know, we'll work with the county on putting those areas together. It's where they can.
The one, the one concern that I have, and this is just kind of a logistical concern, I think this makes a lot of sense, you know, from a, from a voting rights perspective, but it's been, it's been a hard slog to get to this point where Tech is willing to allow one polling location, because of course, you know, on a voting day, it is a disruption, and Tech doesn't cancel class, and I wish they would cancel classes on, on election day, but they don't, right? And so if they have to give up like Squires and Castle for two locations on-campus, I mean, I, I think that might be just a bridge too far.
There would be a lot of reluctance.
There would be a lot of reluctance, so I don't know that, that, and I don't know if that's, that amount of reluctance could be overcome even with concerted effort on behalf of the SGA and, and this board. It does make a lot of sense to do this, but I would say that, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to happen, so, but that's, that's a conversation that, I mean, I don't know if we could.
That would be the easier way, though.
We could have two maps in which one does this suggestion that, that Mary and Bill had brought up about having a, a basically F precinct on-campus and then an E precinct on-campus, and then another that takes account to the changes that are suggested here, and just go to Tech and let, with the Registrar's Office and Tech kind of see what Tech's willing to do, because my guess is Tech's going to say, not this one, unfortunately, but.
If, if taking a piece of E1 and making it F2 doesn't work, and there were to be two precincts, I agree with Professor Gabriel, we'd have to have, or Board Member Gabriel, sorry, sorry, we would have, there would be one location on-campus, but then I would push to have the library somehow added to A2, or I think it's A2, to where the students can walk to the library, but, I mean, I agree, that conversation's not come up, so they have not shown disapproval of that idea, but I can see great reluctance, just because of where, I mean, the trail we've come from so far.
Well, maybe you have to look at the whole picture of what makes sense for everybody and not just, you know, like thinking, well, we just want to have one location, I think you have to look at the whole scenario of what's around Virginia Tech and the, and the precincts and what works easiest, I think, and when you're not used to looking at that, it seems like, yeah, just what place is a good idea, but, but when you really think about it, you know, you could, you could work with two, and it would solve the problem of, of moving everything every which way, I mean, to me, it would make sense, but I guess a lot of times when things make sense, they don't happen, but it's still worth talking about.
Bless you.
Did, did Mr. Wurst want to say, Randy want to say something, he had his hand up. Randy?
Well, I wanted to invite Randy up to make a comment about some of the parameters that I have to work with, with Virginia Tech, okay, as far as parking and security and all that, so.
Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy, thank you for coming.
Is there a way that we could have Ruth share this with the Georgia Times, the maps and things, the digital version, so they could easily put that in the papers?
Absolutely.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
To answer the question on the two precincts on-campus right at the very beginning, that would be hard, really, because you could actually put two of them in Squires, you just separate the, the ballroom there, and they have two polling places, they've done the same thing in the city of Salem, because they have, actually have three precincts at the Salem Civic Center, and so it's, it can be done, you just have to make sure that inside the building, that you have good signs and the things to tell everybody in which ballroom to go to, and separate them that way, and then have the traffic flow to go a particular way, so it's not hard to do if you needed two precincts on-campus. As Marty said, I think you're going to eventually have to face the two precincts, that's going to come, because if you put just E3 in there, we're going to be pushing the top of that 5,000 real quick, and if you add any more, more of the students decide to register and so forth, and that number goes up, then you're going to exceed, so you're going to have to be looking at two possible precincts, you know, pretty soon anyway, so, I figured I'd better say something about that to let you know it's not difficult to do, we can put the two in there, have them easy access for the students and that type of thing, so it can be done, if that's what you all want done. The only issues that we have still with the university is, one of them is still parking, and that is parking for our officers of elections that have to work at the precincts, you know, they come in before 5:00 in the morning to set up, and so they're going to have to have parking close to the precinct, so that, for safety reasons, as well as just access to the particular polling place, so they're going to have to have special parking for that particular group. Now, we fluctuated in that precinct, in the presidential election, we had a whole lot more than we normally have in that precinct, and so you may be talking anywhere from 10 to 15 people working, like we had at the, the airport and stuff, so that'd be 10 people that have, or 15 people that have to give special parking to for that particular day. Then we'd have to have handicap parking near the polling place and stuff in case a person has to vote outside the polls and stuff, so we'll have to have that, but, you know, that'll need to be worked out, but I'm sure they can work for one day to be able to do that, because they've closed down a lot of the lots, whenever there's a night ballgame over there, so I'm sure they can do it for one day or something like that for an election. The other issues deal with security of our voting equipment and stuff, because our office, excuse me, our buildings and groundspeople take the, the voting machines out the day before the election and then come and pick them up the day after the election, and so they're going to have to have access to the, the thing to be, the particular polling place to get the machines there and pick them up, but also, they need to be secured overnight, so that the students don't have access to them and dealing with that, so, but that can be put into a room and just locked up, and if we're provided the key to it or something like that, that can be overcome there. Again, the security aspect of it as far as the, the Geantech Police Department, if we had issues within the polling place, they're going to have to be willing to respond to things because we're on their campus, and, again, I don't see an issue with that, but that's something that they'll have to, to agree to and go with. And then, let me see, the other issue, and one of the issues that came up when we first started talking about the polling place, was the signs, the political signs that normally you put outside the polling place, they did not want to have the signs where you put it in the ground, simply because there's a lot of wires and things that go underneath the ground there, and they were concerned that that could be affected, so, again, I do know that a lot of people discussed the idea of just putting the signs on little stands so they could do it that way, and as long as the political parties knew what the requirement was for the, the polling place, I'm sure they would make adjustments or whatever to be able to put the signs up there. The other issue is handing out paraphernalia, because as you know, you always have people standing outside the polls handing stuff out, will the university allow us to, or not us, but the political parties, to stand there and to hand that information out while on-campus, and will they allow people that aren't students and aren't faculty to be on-campus handing that information out? So they'll need to address that and see if they, you know, they may have to give them special badges or something by going through the Welcome Center and be able to register there the day before, and that type of thing, so there's ways around all these, but that's one of the areas we'll have to discuss when we deal with it. And again, one of the big things that we, we discussed this morning was just the numbers of people within that one precinct, I really think that this stump will be long before it'll exceed that 5,000, especially, you know, they just, my understanding is that they moved everybody out of RASH now and that they're going to start building that, and it's probably going to hold a lot more students than what they had before, so as a result, that's going to mean more registered voters that will end up going in that aspect of it, so just, you know, things that we have to consider whenever we go into this, but nothing that can't be overcome, you know, with just the understanding what's confronting, you know, what we're confronted with.
Any questions or comments with Randy?
I'm glad you, you brought up a couple of things that I hadn't even thought about in thinking about this, and I'm, I hope the things that you have brought up be up for discussions with Tech when you talk about the position.
We have to have all those answered before we can actually move on-campus and stuff, because we've got to inform the parties and everybody else involved on what the requirements are and what will meet Tech's standards as well as ours.
I was going to ask Randy, does this impact like buying more of the voter, the voting machines? How does that work?
Well, one of, that's a good question, I mentioned to Marty today whenever I got to see the, the maps and things, that, what I'll do, if the board wants us to look at what they've come up with, I can actually do an alpha roster and actually break it down for the changes and tell you from what I have right now, the number of voters within that particular area, and that'll tell us how close we are to the number that we need to deal with, but I need to have a defined area to make sure that I pull the right streets and the right dorms and things like that to make it happen, but it can be done.
Thanks.
I'm going to throw out a crazy question. All right, I don't know a whole lot about Registrar-type things, and if you have two precincts in one building, this may be, sound kind of dumb, but can, you're all on the campus, okay, is there a way to divide it up by alphabet, who votes in which precinct, rather than by dorm?
No.
It has to be location.
No.
It's based on physical.
Yeah, physical location.
Okay, because, I mean, that's going to be, we have enough problem in the county where people don't know if they vote in D3 or D4.
Right, right.
You know, so I thought that might be a thing that would be possible to look at.
Well, Supervisor Gabriel had mentioned, we have one dorm on-campus that was split right down the middle, one side, they went to one precinct and another, another precinct, so it was difficult to cause that, but the, but it can, again, as I say, it can be done, and each of the people on, in those dorms, if they decide to split it and have two separate precincts, they would receive a new voter card, obviously, it would tell them which part of that particular, you know, ballroom one, ballroom two, or whatever the case may be, where they would go to vote, and so it would tell them right up front, but signs can also do that too, as they start coming in to Squires, you know, which way to go, and we can put up those little things you use at Disney World or whatever, so that they actually travel down that way to be able to get through, to manage the, the traffic, so it can be done.
You could buy a fast pass, too.
That's possible, but I mean, but it, it can, it can be done to do that, and again, Salem's just a really good example of how it can be done and how it does work, so that way, there'd be less of an impact on the university, because you'd have the one building that would be dealt with that day, and unless you got a dance going on or something on that Tuesday evening, they can, generally, the ballrooms are pretty open during the week, so it can be done.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks, for coming out.
Marty?
Before we start, is there anything you want us to look at, or?
Yeah, I guess I was going to close up and just, just say, you've heard the information tonight, what are the next steps that the board would like to see from, from staff, and I know that we want to try to, if, if the board is interested in moving this forward, we wanted to try to have it ready to go in early 2014, to be able to present it to the folks at Tech, make sure that Randy and the Registrar's Office is involved, we don't have to have DOJ approval anymore, so that's a step that we don't have to deal with now, but.
I mean, we, I mean, we could put together, and we also thought the Student Government could help us with that, looking at these new maps, and we could put together an option of, of two precincts being side-by-side, one in F1 and E, but same location or similar locations, close to locations, and then we could use this map as another example of what we would have to change in order to get the balances, and we'll even look at some other things too, it's just the population in a lot of these areas, further west you go, is not much, and so even if you put a lot of acreage of land, a lot of these big areas, open areas, don't have a lot of population, so we're kind of limited to, that's why we think Warhammer may be the only way to go, but, so we could put that.
I like to go with the two precincts, to look at that, because it makes more sense to me to, instead of having to, I don't know, just makes more sense to me that you, you would do that.
It seemed to me that we don't, that we should not call anything right now, because this is all fresh and new and, we need to, one of the biggest things we need to find out is. things we need to find out is, can we use Tech's property to have it on?
The answer...
Whether it's one or two can be.
Yes. The answer to that has generally been yes, as long as it's a student-only voting precinct. Now, Dr. Wilson and I hadn't had any conversation about multiple precincts, but...
What other, any people that live within that area and the F1 or A2, whatever it is over there where they kind of got scattered out like stair steps, uh, that are not Tech residents?
The, the whole blue area in E3 that's shown on that map are all residents that live in Tech housing. The only exception is the one in F1 that, that was in G1, is now showing an F1 up in that corner there. That's the military dorms. So they're on campus housing, but we don't have them currently in E3 because of the number. But if you did an E and an F, we would make an F somewhere up top, I would think, and then E would be below it.
And that would take an area that I was...
Yeah, yes. We'd then bring in, and then we would move those away from the Lutheran ward, which would then stop them having to walk across.
Right.
So, I mean, that's an option we can look at. And we'll see what the numbers do, too. That, that should make the numbers okay, because then you'd be taking from E, putting an F, and that would equal...
Well, I think the next step is to have the administration and whoever's fixing, looking at the maps to make those, those changes on the map that you think need to be done, and have two precincts. And at the same time, be talking with the people at Tech to see if squires can be used, or I don't know that there's another place that would be accessible.
I don't, I don't know. It's up to us. I mean, I think that, what, I, I, I agree, but I think that Tech needs to be involved in the conversation to make sure that they're willing to do. Because they might think that Castle might be better. So, I don't wanna get into this situation where we're suggesting locations, like, that's, that's up to them.
They're the ones who have to suggest and...
That's why we don't wanna cull anything.
Yeah.
So maybe the first thing they do is...
They're the ones that have to determine where you can be and, and what you can, um, you know, which building is easiest for them to be able to give up for two or three days, uh, considering what you were saying, that you've got to move in the day before, move out the day after. So there has to be a three-day kind of setup of people in and out of there. So, yeah.
We can certainly work on that, um, probably the first January meeting, bring that back.
We can get together a couple of options, you know, well before that, and maybe send them out. And then, I don't know when you wanna get back.
Okay. We could, we could, we could have a discussion on the 16th.
Yeah.
If we've got it ready.
I think that, um, Tech has changed its minds from not having any precincts to allowing you to have the student precinct. So, you know, they are making some movement toward allowing us to, to have this.
I'd like to know, I mean, before we...
Good to you.
Get too far with this two precinct idea, just to see what Tech would think of that idea. And maybe, maybe a conversation between the administration and, um, Mr. Wirth's office and, and Tech, um, so that they can talk about...
I'll try, I'll try to touch base with Sherwood this week.
...these issues. And then, you know, maybe, yeah, maybe at the 16th, we could, we could get a report back about whether this is even a possibility or not, because they might say, no, we only want one precinct. And then, at least then, we know what we're, we're dealing with. So, but I would hope the SGA could be involved in this conversation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, certainly the students need to be involved in those discussions, um, with both administrations and, and you guys, too.
Randy?
Let me add just one more thing. I'm working with a senior engineering class over at Tech. They actually spent, uh, the whole day, Election Day, at E3, um, uh, looking at the flow of, uh, how the, uh, the voters came in and went through there. And they did a timing thing on how, how long it took for each station, for the person to go through. And they're doing a lot of studies and giving feedback on that. But I sort of asked them to also look at precincts on campus and to give their feedback on it. And these are engineering people that know probably the flow of where it should be and stuff. So if, you know, I don't wanna step on toes, but you're including the, the student government people, you may wanna include this particular class. Uh, there are four of them that work directly with me. Uh, along, Dr. Travis is over the class over there. And, um, uh, they're doing a lot of good work. And that type of information, I think, would be very good, uh, for the board and stuff. So whenever you start talking about specifics, because I brought up just for example, Warham Royal Gym. And I said, you know, why not try to put up one polling place there, because the students are going across campus from the dorms over there during the day? And maybe that'll keep them from all coming at 4:00 in the afternoon and try to help that. But again, they felt, their first go at it, that squires is probably as good a place as any to have it there. So that's just some of the feedback I've gotten from them and stuff. And so I, I would recommend that you maybe consider using them, um, when you get down to the, where on campus it should be, too.
Thank you, thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Does, um, Mr. Meadows and Mr. Mann have enough information?
We need a direction for them now, yeah.
I think we're good to go. We'll try to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll create a couple of options.
Yep. And we'll have a, we'll report back on the 16th, and then as soon as we have more substance, we'll put it back on as a work session.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, everybody agrees with that, well, need a motion?
Move to go out of work session.
Set in.
Seconded, roll call, please.
Supervisor Perkins?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Tuck?
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Aye.
Supervisor Creed?
Aye.
Chair Politis?
Aye.
Seven ayes. We hear out of work session.
Any other discussion of subjects to discuss before we adjourn? I call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.